Okay. Top of the meeting. One of the Pledge Allegiance, led by Tom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does any citizens like to be heard? Can I see any? Transportation update, Mr. Polito.
Right. Ask Randy to come tonight, and since we did have some changes in transportation, and that was a big focus of our work this summer, I thought it'd be a good idea to have him update where we're at.
Okay, just a brief update now that we're just a little bit over a week into the school year. Three of our new part-time drivers have already started. There's another three that have accepted a position with the school district. We're just waiting for their, the rest of their clearances to come in, as far as their child abuse criminal background checks, those sorts of things. And then, we have, we have to conduct some additional interviews to find our additional seventh part-time person. Right now, we're, the changes as far as the number of students enrolling in transportation or saying they need transportation, that's finally starting to settle, now that we're a little bit of more than a week into school. We're transporting roughly 2,800 children right now, students, back and forth. Just a reminder, we picked up from EMTA, the Piper Burley Route, Grover Cleveland, OLP, St. Jude, and Luther Memorial. From First Student, we picked up Community Country Day School, Erie First, Leadership Christian Academy, Lincoln, and Joanna Connell Schools. Right now, what that means is all of our drivers aren't double runs, meaning they're going out, they're doing an elementary school, and then they're doing either a parochial non-public or a high school route. And then they're coming back to the service center to work with the labor crew, and then they're going back out in the afternoon and doing two runs in the afternoon also. That's a little bit different than what we've had in the past, so we're really maximizing our drivers this year. We started with special ed's help. We're now tracking all transportation information in our Infinite Campus software, something new, we've never done it before. We're still tweaking information in there. But this will allow then, any school, once, once it's all cleaned up, any school can then go into the system and say, if little Johnny forgets what bus he's on, they can go in there and look it up, or if mom or dad call and say, hey, I forgot what bus they're on, they can look that up, and they'll have that information at their hands. Now that the number of kids needing tran, or requesting transportation is starting to slow a little bit, we're reviewing our route, beginning to review our routes. We know some of them are still too long, EMTA's making some changes. We've had a few high school routes that were showing up late in the morning for EMTA. They've started making some adjustments to those, so we're going to continue making those adjustments throughout the next, probably, two weeks. EMTA has been really very responsive this year, in, in dealing with them throughout the last, at least the last couple of weeks. Just a reminder, bus passes are due, all students riding an EMTA bus must have a bus pass beginning Monday, September 10th. So we know some of our ridership is inflated right now on the EMTA buses because they're not checking bus passes, so kids are just getting on and going wherever they want to go. So we know it's a little bit inflated. A reminder is going out to all the principals tomorrow, just to remind them that these kids need bus passes and, or, you know, to get, encourage them to apply for them if they're eligible. Some of the biggest challenges we've, we've encountered so far are athletics. At the end of the day, we used to contract a lot of that out to First Students. The problem is, everybody's got to leave for their football game, volleyball game, whatever, at 2:30, 3 o'clock, 2:15, right when we're in the middle of our afternoon routes. So that's been a big challenge for us. We're hoping with these extra drivers, we can handle some more of that. Parking at some of the schools, Tim, Tim Bone is aware of it, and he's also made the Erie Police aware of it. We have parents double parking, blocking buses in, parking on sidewalks, going the wrong way down streets, so we're trying to control that the best we can. We have an issue at East Middle School where the kids got so used to getting on the extra fixed route buses last year for crow, for crowding purposes, that they're continuing to do this this year, but now they're forgetting about the tripper routes that EMTA set up for the school. So it's kind of, it's the complete opposite. So we're, I'm working with Matt Cobble to try to get some of those kids back on those tripper routes that EMTA designed for us. And then the other issue that we're having right now is, we're getting a lot of requests questioning from parents at Grover Cleveland, where the parent, where the child does not qualify for transportation because they're under that mile and a half, but yet those parents want some sort of transportation other than EMTA for their kids. And, but it's, it's mostly coming from Grover Cleveland right now. And I don't know if that's because, you know, we took that route in from EMTA this year that's, you know, maybe causing some of that concern or questioning, I'm not sure. Any questions?
Yeah, whatever you've been doing with all your time.
That's it. Yes?
Were most people who just mentioned Grover Cleveland riding the EMTA, EMTA bus route last year?
Yes, they would have, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Or they would have either ridden, it depends on the situation. If they were over a mile and a half, they would have ridden a First Student bus. But if they were under the mile and a half, they didn't, they didn't get transportation last year, unless they qualified for some sort of hardship.
So I was asking if it's something they did have last year and don't?
In a lot of those cases, it's the people that are under a mile and a half, and they would not have gotten it last year.
Okay.
So.
Is that the, that's the norm now for elementary, middle, and high?
Yeah, elementary's the, elementary and middle is the 1.5 miles, high school's two miles.
Can we maybe get the Blue Coats to come out and help the parents with the traffic? I know they mentioned last year that they were doing at Wilson.
At which, which school? I know they were, I know they're kind of.
Whatever ones you're saying.
Oh.
Issues with the buses getting out, because I, I've been seeing what's happening over a few of the schools.
Yeah, I know they were, they're.
It's hard.
Yeah, Brother D is trying to spread, spread them out at all the schools.
Okay, yeah, just a suggestion to have him maybe.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And Tim's, Tim's been, Tim Bone has been very helpful, and he's also contacted the Erie Police.
Good.
To try to make some, some rounds, but.
Is that 2,800 the number of bus passes or the number of students?
Number of students.
Students.
Yeah, well, at, for the EMTA bus passes, right now, today, we're at 2,100.
Okay.
We're going to get a spike next week. When I looked, when I compared the numbers, I didn't have a number for beginning of September from last year, but end of September, we were at 2,131. So I think we're a little bit ahead overall, but once they start checking bus passes Monday, and with the warm weather.
Yeah.
The kids don't want to ride. They're waiting for the weather to turn more miserable and then know that the bus pass.
Right.
The two runs a day, the people that are having two runs a day, they got enough time in between?
It's tight.
Well, see, that because when winter comes, that changes.
It's, it's tight.
18 minutes.
Yeah, it's tight. The biggest, the biggest, one of the bigger challenges, again, we're, we're still looking at those, trying to see if we can offload some of those kids on other routes, but one of the biggest challenges we have, and it doesn't happen every day, is when we're transporting the special, some special ed's, ed children, students, and nobody's there to pick the kid up off the bus.
Yeah, right.
And then it's putting us, it's putting us behind.
Yeah, I mean, we got, I mean, the problem, the only problem that I can see that's, that's a little bit nerve-wracking is that when you put them on such a tight schedule, that is not such a good thing for their safety. Oh, I got, I got, I got the next run, I got the next run, I gotta get these kids, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't like to see that kind of attitude take over, so.
Yeah. And so far, all the, the second part of the runs, they've been very, they understand the kind of the process, and they've been.
Right.
They've been okay so far, yeah.
Second part is the difference.
Yeah.
They go to that first run, and they're so concerned about.
Getting their attention.
Making sure they're at the, you know, so that's all.
Yeah.
I'm sure they're going to handle it.
Randy, what did we do about the, the athletes then? How did we transport them?
Well, right now, we, we have a couple of different things going. We started an activity bus every day that's going between Strong, Strong Vincent, Wilson, Collegiate, and Erie High, and that was per the request of Mr. Mifsud of where volleyball kids were going, and cross-country kids were going, and football, and those sorts of things. So right now, we've brought our transportation supervisor in to drive a little bit with some of these to help out until these three people come on board. Once these three people come on board, we're going to see a little bit of a relief, because it's not five teams going somewhere a day. It's, you know, today we had one team going, I don't know, down to Warren or something like that. So it's not, it's not an overabundance of teams, you know, with athletic teams only at one high school kind of helps.
Okay. Thank you. One LERTA.
All right. At the last meeting, I, I reported that we, Mr. Patrungar, Mr. Dogby, and I met with Senator Loughlin and Chris Broner from the City Economic Development Department, and they asked us to take a look at some additional data, which maybe would help us justify doing a LERTA, especially on the commercial side, and that, we did actually take a look at that, and the information they provided did not make us feel like we needed to make any adjustments in our numbers, that what they were looking at really didn't pan out. And I do have one piece of that here tonight. If you look at the large real estate development projects sheet that's at your desk, one of the things they asked us to take a look at, we've been talking about the, the big projects that are occurring here across the city. I think a number that's being thrown out quite often is about $700 million in development. We, I actually worked with Scott Maz at the Assessment Office to really determine what these, at least estimate what we think these properties are going to come on the tax rolls at. We also took a look at what, because two of the big ones here are the pilots, are the hospitals, which have a 50% pilot. Each of these ones, because they're so big, also qualify for the job creation component of LERTA, which gives them a 90% LERTA. So when you look at, at the overall estimated assessed value for these projects, it's about $56 million. The tax before the LERTA would be about $700,000, but again, because they qualify for the job creation component, it's going to take the tax down to about $71,000 for the next 10 years. And you can see that those are estimated to come on the tax rolls by 2020. So when you look at that, we really can't adjust our projections in the short term to, to accommodate this, because there's really no big impact for the district until the, the LERTA expires. So that, that was one big piece of this. But as we continue to discuss the LERTA, one of the things that came up, and this is something that, again, Chris Broner felt very passionately about, was the possibility of working to do a LERTA for our residential properties moving forward. So if you look at the second page, we, we actually went back and took a look at the actual residential additions over the last five to six years, and you can see that the total additions during that time period were about $21 million, which, which averages out to about $3.5 million a year. The total tax on that annually, when you average it out, is about $60,000, and right now, we're paying, we have a, basically a 50% LERTA on those properties, so we're receiving on average each year about a $30,000 bump to our tax base because of, of these properties. So what he was proposing, because if you look on the front page, you can see that the larger properties really do have a benefit with the existing LERTA at 90%. He was proposing that, that we consider maybe doing just the 10-year, 100% on our residential properties, which I, I think that that, that makes more sense for us. They, they have been talking about finding a way to fill that $30,000 gap for us, so if the board is comfortable with us continuing to negotiate that, and would, would be comfortable with me bringing back a recommendation that would allow us to provide some type of relief for our residential property owners that want to do additions in the form of a 10-year LERTA, and we were able to do that without affecting our budget in the short term, would you be interested in, in us pursuing that?
Bobby Chicken, yeah?
I think it's feasible. Yeah, I think we need to structure it in a way that it's going to supplement our income to 2022, 2023, that it's going to accelerate to offset the deficit that we're going to be looking at. But I, you know, whatever you guys decide, you know, I'd be for listening, see what, what you, and they come up with.
Guys, you're okay if we keep negotiating?
Yeah, and you're speaking in lieu of the other LERTA that we were talking about. We're, we're just trying to.
Right. At this point, I, unless somebody comes in and offers to fill that $178,000.
Right.
recurring hole on the commercial side, I just don't see a path forward for us to do any type of LERTA on that side. But this, this may be, you know, another option, and again, it'll be helping out our residents.
Right.
You know, our constituents in this, and also at the same time, participating in something that the mayor feels very passionately about.
I would say that I am much more comfortable moving forward with, with the residential side of the LERTA. I do think that that goes to help our, our families, the small business community, like that kind of stuff, that, that's, that we really want, what we're worried about before, without, without hurting our students and the teachers that are in the process.
Thank you. Truancy Initiatives, Ms. Zabrowski.
Yes. It just, we just kind of wanted to share with you some of the summer push things that we've done to make parents aware of the new laws and the procedures that the school will be using for absences. So we used the Blue Coats this summer, during summer school, and they made 372 phone calls and 231 home visits, just to build relationships with families and make parents aware of the importance of school attendance. Part of our strategic plan shows that we have a game changer of attaining 95% attendance, which means 18 out of 20 students with 95% attendance. That's our goal, and that is a five-year plan. So for this year, we are having, most of our schools are trying to use a variety of incentives, some positive messaging, to work with our students and our families, to remind them to be in school every single day. Each administrator, each school has one administrator who is dedicating their time to reach out to our families and to conference with the families and assist when absenteeism becomes an issue. We have also a Blue Coat that is going to be continuing to support our schools throughout the school year. Our district police, Mr. Vona, Officer Vona, has an east side and a west side officer who's going to be assisting as well with students who are not coming to school, who are, who are not bringing their excuses in a timely manner. We also, Mr. Polito, and Attorney Gornal and I met with the President Judge, Judge Tracilla, and we're working with Judge Tracilla and the local judges on having a good partnership with the school district to making parents aware of the consequences if students aren't in school and when those written excuses are not accepted. Just a few reminders to families would be that parents, we need that note if a child is absent, being sick, but they, it needs to come in no more than three days when they return. They have to bring that note in as soon as they come back to school. Being late for school and/or leaving early does count towards minutes, towards being tardy, and that can accumulate to 300 minutes equals one excuse day. And so that's important for families to realize. And if the school calls or sends a notice to meet regarding absenteeism or truancy, we really want our parents to be aware, and we want them to attend and work with us to help make their child be able to come to school every day. And another reminder that hasn't changed, if a child is sick 10 days or more, after that 10th day, they must have a doctor's excuse, and that is another law that is still in place. And then a reminder about family vacations, we are, we talked about this, and we did make an adjustment in the policy, and we talked about if it was pre-planned, they need to get a notice to the superintendent, and the superintendent will review each of those pieces. But our biggest thing is, we want our students in school, and if they miss school, they miss out, and they have to catch up. And just for everyone in both of these, this is their, our family handbook guide, this is the handbook, and this is our family guide, there is information more than just what I said today. It's all spelled out exactly what truancy is, it talks about what absenteeism, and how important it is for our students to be in school.
Two thoughts. One is I think it's also important for the community to understand too, that the schools are mandated reporters, so that when we have students who are chronically truant, that not only will stem a plan with the school, it also stems a referral to the Office of Children and Youth, and that parents can be held accountable for education in the class. I think that that is something, it's unfortunate when it gets to that point, but I think it's something that we need to be aware of. And two, I had the thought is, while the Blue Coats were out, we were meeting with the families, were they finding themes, or were they identifying consistent gaps or problems that they were seeing?
That's a great, both points are really great, and I appreciate you bringing those up. Absolutely about the Office of Children and Youth, it is mandatory when it becomes a chronic, a chron, chronic habitual tardiness. There you go. And truancy, habitual truancy. The, the piece that you're speaking regarding the Blue Coats, they did say that transportation was one of the issues that they talked about over the summer, and so we really were looking into that. Randy and I met with the Blue Coats, we looked at the areas that the families were saying that could be of an issue, and we were working to try to make sure that we had the transportation if it was a transportation issue and the buses, if, we were going to work that out. We also shared, and this is really, United Way has the 211 call, and we made the Blue Coats aware, we have all of our principals aware, that if there are other issues that are going on in a, in a family's life, that maybe they don't have the funding to buy school uniforms, we are there from the school to support that, but 211 is the United Way number, that if you call them, they have all of the agencies available to support families with issues that might be occurring. So we, we did give the Blue Coats, and many times, some of the assistant principals did go with the Blue Coats, so it was to build, to, to, you know, stop the gaps. We need to be working side by side with our families, and so we were doing that. But 211 is a great resource from the United Way in order for our families, if they have needs, that we can try to get them some, some supports.
Mr. President, I'd just like to point out too, the Blue Coats, we're very excited about that initiative and what it did this summer. Not only is it helping us with truancy, but what we're seeing is this, you know, really lines up with the strategic plan and what we're doing there, because the Blue Coats really have those connections with the families, so it's really helping our administrators get out and connect with those families. A lot of times, I think they were finding, when we had kids, even this year, at the start of the school year, weren't here in school, they, they actually knew that there was an address change, or the, the student was living with somebody else, and were able to make that connection and really bring the kid back and make sure that they're going to school. So, very exciting possibilities there, and we're hoping that it's going to yield results this school year.
Okay. Thank you. You up again?
Just a, just a brief update on the curriculum right now. Our pre-K to 5 literacy committee is working with the pilots that are out there right now at our, four of our schools, and as that continues, our hope is that we'll be able to bring a recommendation to the superintendent on some materials that would be across the board in all 10 buildings for literacy. So as we were working on that and the year started, we, we started talking about the urgency for mathematics as well. So we've been starting to begin the discussion of looking at best practices, looking at what's out there, looking at the ed reports to see what could we be able to give our students, and look at the schools that are not piloting the literacy, but possibly do some work in those buildings, so that we can come to the table at the end of the year, this year, with a math supplemental or math program that we could implement as well. So we're, our hope is that we can really get, you know, get going on this and bring it to, to you with some, some changes. Questions?
Thank you. Mr. Polito?
Well, as I indicated at the last meeting, this year on the strategic plan, we're really focusing on the buildings and starting to, to work on implementation at the building level rather than the district level, and I just wanted to share, we, we have our first data summit coming up on Monday, the 17th, and Tuesday, the 18th of this month. We have a very busy schedule. Mutiu is going to be here for both days. On the first day, from 8 to 3:30, the principals and the ILT teams will all be together in the Yale Ballroom. In the morning, they'll be actually reviewing the school level plans and really finalizing that for the 18, 19 school year. In the afternoon, we're going to work together to co-construct what our data summits are going to be looking like moving forward. So again, it's, you know, we're still trying to focus here on shared leadership and not saying that everything is coming from the fourth floor, you know, from this building, and we want to work with our ILT teams and our principals to really take a look at what data we're going to analyze at, at these data summits on the 12-week cycles, and what type of assessments we're going to use to really assess our progress. We also are going to bring in the core planning team from 3:30 to 5:30 on that same day to talk about our progress. That, that again, will be at the Yale Ballroom, and I'll send an update out to the board with all these dates and times as well. Tuesday, the 18th, we, we're going to have the alignment team in from 7:30 to 8:30 here in this building, in Conference Room 3, and then from 9 to 12, Mutiu is going to meet with our pillar and goal leads, and we're going to talk again about implementation at the district level. And then the, in the afternoon, from 1 to 2:30, we're going to have some facilitator training, so people in central, central office can become experts in those building-level plans and really go out and help the buildings really focus on those plans and implement them for the upcoming school year. So I just, again, I'll send these dates and times out to the board later this week, and you're more than welcome to attend any and all those sessions you'd like to.
Awesome. Thank you. Eric yourself?
So, to let you know, right now, the maritime program that we have going is our fifth graders are having an opportunity to go on the Letty G. Howard, and today, they actually were sailing. There's five schools that will go in the fall and five schools that will go in the spring, so all 10 schools, fifth grade will have an opportunity. Eighth grade will begin sailing next week, so all of our eighth graders will have that opportunity. And then our Maritime Center program is in its infancy stage. This is the first year, it began this year, and there are 27 students who are currently attending in the morning, and then they go to Erie High in the afternoon for their additional classwork. So we're pretty excited about giving our students an opportunity to see what is out there in, in the, in the pathway for the maritime.
Can you just elaborate on what those pathways are for us?
For the maritime? So they're, currently, they're taking, they'll be taking navigation, sailing, intro to sailing, they're taking marine biology. So the pathway is, they have a freshman, sophomore, junior, senior electives that they're taking at the maritime. I do have a schedule that if anyone would like to sail on any of the boat, you know, the boats, I have that, so you're more than welcome if you wanted to touch base with me, to see if you want to go with the students on the trip, or if you want to go to the maritime in the morning to see what our students are actually doing over there. But we have the curriculum that's available to you, if you'd like that, we can send it to you, so you can see what the electives are for each of the school years that they'll be there.
And I think I was more interested in the historical component of the program as well, if we're doing anything with that.
Is Pam still here? Pam? I, I'm sorry to bother you, but Ms. Feeney asked about the historical side.
Right now, the, as the first year of the program, they're doing Navigation 1, Boat Building and Maintenance, Sailing, Marine Technology, and there's one other one that I can't, Arts of the Sailor.
Okay.
And so the Arts of the Sailor is more the history piece.
Yeah.
Where the kids. And so, the Arts of the Sailor is more the history piece, where the kids will actually physically make ditty bags, and they make their own tools to work on the boats. And the guys that are teaching down there at the Maritime Center, Clive Tattersall is the Erie School District teacher, and then the other guys that are down there at the Bayfront are extremely knowledgeable in maritime history as well as history of Lake Erie. So, they throw all of that stuff in as the class presents itself. They're out on the lake, they talk about shipwrecks, they're out, you know, sailing in the bay and talk about all that kind of stuff. So, it really is pretty cool, and the kids, I've been down there a couple times, and the kids are really loving it, so it's going to be a lot of fun.
And so, what career path would that be leading to, or where are we headed?
Well, so, you know what? I have no idea, but they keep telling us that, you know, with the baby boomers retiring and everybody, that all of these jobs are going to be open across the world. I mean, it's not just here on Lake Erie or here in Erie, PA, it's going to be worldwide. They have a worldwide shortage in the maritime. So, they're talking about not just the Navy or the Coast Guard, but the Merchant Marine. They're talking about shipping and docks, and that the kids will get what they call a TWIC card. You know, I mean, they have so many opportunities that are available to them, and one of the big things they talk about a lot is, you can work on a boat in the Gulf, and then you're off for three months, and you come home and spend your money here. So, you know, I mean, that's the kind of things that they're talking to kids about.
Mr. Fabrizi, they will, the students that do graduate from this will qualify to go immediately into the Merchant Marine and work as a sailor on one of those ships. So, that's one of the, I think, one of the plus ones that we feel pretty excited about with that program.
And it also has generated the discussion with the pilots in the aviation, and we're beginning the discussions on what does that look like, because there are a lot of pilots that, we need pilots, there's also mechanics that we need for our planes. So, it is beginning to generate some really exciting things, so there's talking about it between the different transportation units in the area.
The Erie School District teachers worked in partnership with the Jefferson Education Society several years ago. I was actually on the committee with Lori Hogan and a few other teachers. So, there is a curriculum in our fifth grade. I don't know if it's there anymore, needs to be dusted off, but there already is a curriculum written that could get our fifth grade students excited in this pathway, so that, because there was some talk, Pam, when you did that forum up at the Vo-Tec about getting our students interested in the middle schools so that they're ready to go into these pathways in high school. So, I just wanted to mention that to you, that that's somewhere out there.
So, Pam, do you want to speak to what happened with a field trip for our seventh graders that went out to the airport?
There was a group of seventh graders from East High School that went out to see the Redtail Squadron, the Tuskegee Airman exhibit, and I haven't had the chance to talk to any of the kids personally, I've talked to Matt Gobal, he's his principal over there, and he said it was awesome, they really loved it, so they had a good time.
I did that with my fifth graders at Jefferson, I still have my tags from it, yeah, it was awesome.
So, we're working on doing that and really looking at that pathway as well.
Thank you. Just want to remind the board that it's that time once again for election of PSBA officers for 2019. The board's required to cast its vote by October 11th, and this item is on the next Wednesday's agenda. We've sent an email on August 21st with a direct link to information on candidates who are running for office. Please review this information, be prepared to vote on your selections at the next Wednesday's committee of the whole meeting. Thanks. Anything on new business? Not, we're going to go on to any other matter, and Angela didn't make it back yet, but she did put a proposal in here. Tim, if you want to, if you could, please. Let's have everybody's seat there.
I actually have a copy of it in front of me. I do. Angela took care of me. It is a resolution that it shall become the policy of the school district that in the unfortunate event a student passes away while matriculating in a high school operated by the school district, the administration shall make available to the parents and/or guardians of that student an honorary diploma that shall be awarded upon the consent of the parents and/or guardians, to the parents and/or guardians of the student during the graduation ceremony for the deceased student's class. So, it would be a policy of the board to award diplomas to deceased students' families with their graduating class, if that student passes away in high school.
And with the parents' consent.
With the parents' consent, so long as they want to do it.
So, if you talk to the parents about it, they would like that, we would do it, that's all.
Right. There may be some parents that don't want to.
Right. I mean, you know.
So, I just want to make everybody aware of that. I don't see a problem with it, but that's just me.
Mr. Trung, is that then something that should go on the agenda?
Yeah, that's fine. If nothing else on any other matter, we'll take a 10-minute recess, we have to go to executive session for personnel matters, and we'll meet in room 3 in 10 minutes.